Good evening. We'd like to call the May ninth, two thousand and seventeenth work session of the Precyde County Board of Education to order. First thing up is our invocation and pledge with Ms. Nancy Roche. Please stand as you're able.
We gather today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our school system. Also bless all those who are suffering in any way. Please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have agenda before us. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. All in favor? That's unanimous. Presentation and discussion. First item up is Inspire presentation. Mr. Perkel, you're gonna get us started on these?
Good afternoon. You're all very familiar with the Inspire program. Just to briefly summarize that again, we have developed the Inspire program several years ago. We've had a lot of folks to go through that program for assistant principals who are at least one year of experience as an assistant principal and who are desiring to become a principal in the future are the candidates that are eligible for this program. This year, we have two wonderful candidates who've gone through the program. Ms. Gina Burns, who is assistant principal at Brookwood Elementary, and Ms. Jennifer Williams, who is the assistant principal at Coming Elementary. And these folks actually design and develop and implement a project that is to serve as a school improvement type project and to help students in their achievement. And so they're gonna tell you about their project and share that with you and the things that they learned as a leader and how it's helped their school and most importantly, how it has benefited their students. So I think Gina Burns is gonna be first.
You're so bad. I am Gina Burns, assistant principal at Brookwood Elementary, and I would like to talk with you today about a program that we implemented this year called the Advanced Content Flexible Model. These are some of the things I'm gonna talk about with the Advanced Content Flexible Model, why we needed to change, some of the student placement, and some of the data and teacher and student feedback. Why we wanted to change is that Brookwood, what we were serving students in grades three through five are gifted students in advanced content in the areas of ELA and math, and we were seeing a need for high achieving students to also be placed in these programs so they could receive that same content. We worked on student placement and we looked at different type of criteria to place these students. We reviewed milestone assessment, pre-assessments, teacher input. Teachers talked from grades, like say grade four, talked with grade five of their previous students to try to determine the best placement for these students. And what we wanted to do is make these placements fluid throughout the year, meaning that a student, if they were placed in advanced content and the pace maybe was too fast or they weren't able to handle the content, that they could be placed on an on-level course if needed. And if a student was on an on-level course and they worked really hard and they were ready for an advanced content, they were able to be placed in that content. How we went about this is we didn't wanna move students immediately. What we wanted to do is look at the data for the nine weeks. So we looked at, we met with teachers, I did, in each grade level, and we talked about how they were performing in the classroom. We looked at the data, their on their report card, some of their common assessments and teacher observation and really some motivation. So we looked at those teachers, we discussed it, and when we made the decision to move a student either to advanced content or possibly to an on-level, we made the decision and we also spoke with the parents and discussed that with them. Now, as you can imagine, this could be a scheduling nightmare for my data clerk. So her and I worked closely together and she actually came up with a form so that she could keep track. And teachers would fill out if a student was moving to what level they were moving to, and she could keep a hard copy as well as I could keep a hard copy and she could enter the data into the infinite campus. We don't have the milestones data right now, but we will be looking at that. But we do do interims in, at Brookwood, and we do a fall interim and we do a spring interim. The green that you will see there is the fall interim, and the blue represents the spring interim scores, the percentage. And what we're trying to achieve is we want to lower the level of students in our intervention and increase our exceeding proficiency. And as you can see, in fifth grade ELA, fifth grade math, we did just that. And again, in fourth grade, the same is true. We wanted to reduce our intervention students in both areas and increase in the exceeding proficiency, which we did in fourth grade and also in third grade. So throughout the year, I was talking with teachers and I gave them a survey, and these are actual comments that teachers made from the survey that they thought was most successful for their students. And they felt that the students were able to take risks and work at the same pace, and we were able to serve students in advanced content. We had over sixty fifth grade students in the gifted and advanced math. So we were able to really serve them the way they needed to be served. What we thought, what they thought was least successful was, we had a lot of movement. So they felt like their classroom community suffered a little bit. They couldn't build that classroom community as best they could. And with any movement of classrooms, you really, you lose a little bit of instruction time waiting in line to get to the next classroom. So that was, that was something that they didn't, that they felt was least successful that we needed to work on. And this is some of the teacher feedback. So I wanted you to hear what some of the teachers had to say.
I think one of the challenges we have faced is not being able to take an interdisciplinary approach. Our math and our ELA with third graders focuses a lot, focuses a lot on learning strategies. But then we switch classes back for our content, our social studies and science in the afternoon, and so we can't as easily reference a lesson from that morning when we want to apply some of our specific learning strategies, maybe making a graph or asking students to find the main idea. We definitely try to include those strategies, but it's just not as seamless as we would like it to be.
I think along those same lines, if we could move to more of a block schedule where we blocked math and science together and blocked ELA and social studies together so that we could more seamlessly have an interdisciplinary approach where perhaps we're teaching the strategies and then we're directly applying it to content within the same day. I think the schedule would also allow us to have just two rosters, maintain two parent distribution lists, two its learning courses instead of three. And then, of course, with just having two classes, we could more quickly get to know our students, giving us, we'd just be able to begin differentiating and personalizing specifically for our students and their individual needs more quickly in the year.
The kids that I have, which is a co-taught inclusion classroom, this is sometimes, this has been the first time that they've actually been able to really answer questions. There's not somebody shouting out the answer before they have a time to think and process. So we've actually encouraged the kids. We sit and wait. We give them that wait time, that processing time that they need. So now they're more willing to raise their hand and take a risk, even if they're not correct, because there's, they feel comfortable with the people around them. In my classroom, what's most successful is the fact that I can do more small group. I have a co-taught classroom along with the advanced content model. So I have a co-teacher in here or parent support. So we get to break the kids down into smaller groups and do more guided reading and guided math, which has helped the kids in the classroom level that I have.
And of course, I wanted you to hear some of the student feedback.
What I liked about taking classes is you get to meet different friends and teachers. What I liked about taking classes is that you get your way, not too easy, not too hard.
Hey guys, what's your favorite part of switching classes this year?
Well, I like to be able to learn with different students than you would in one room.
I like, I like to learn with a different teacher because they teach differently than other teachers.
I like that you do friends because like if some of your friends are in the same classroom as you, like for a whole world, they might be in like your stadium, like classroom or our class.
What I don't like about taking classes is you have to bring a lot of stuff.
What I didn't like about changing classes is that you have to wait.
Hey guys, what did I like about switching classes this year?
I didn't like going from class to class and having to carry all of my stuff around the hallway.
I didn't like the fact that we had to carry all our stuff without bags, so I usually dropped my stuff.
Well, eventually, if we were learning about government with our weapons, we did get to, we did get to have with our own, with our own weapons for Brooklyn, but we came up with a binder.
I think you should follow direction because with different teachers, you don't know what they'll be like. I think you should keep your desk organized because if you can't find something, you may be late to that certain class.
Hey guys, what advice would you give to somebody who's changing classes next year?
I would probably tell them to just bring a bag in general.
And if they do, I'd put all their stuff in it.
I think they should look forward to changing classes because it's really fun getting to experience school with different teachers.
And one of the little girls was saying about the amendment, they were studying amendments, and because they had to carry all their things, they wanted to present an amendment to me and show me that they were dropping their things on the floor and the teachers didn't wanna bring their book, want them to bring their book bags to the class because it would take up too much space. So I did buy them bags, and they were different colors. So they brought all their stuff in little bags. So I did want you to know, I helped out a little with that. And as we reflect on this program, what we found was very successful is that students that worked really hard, that weren't identified as gifted or advanced, were able to move to those classrooms because of their, their work ethic and their ability to do well, and so they were able to be placed in those advanced classes. One of the things we, we are talking about is minimizing the movement of students, especially in third grade, and we do need to have more communication and collaboration among the Looking ahead at this point right now in the spring, we are reviewing student data, and the teachers are meeting vertically. So our fourth grade team is meeting with the fifth grade team, and they're looking at student placement and seeing where students really need to begin so we can tighten up on maybe some of that movement at the beginning of the year. We're also talking about teachers in four teams and sometimes in second grade, maybe putting them in two teams to minimize that movement. And we're also discussing departmentalization in fifth grade so that students are with their homeroom teacher for a block to get that more community sense in their homeroom. And that's it.
Good. I was gonna ask you about the block. So that is an option on the table to minimize, and I can understand, especially in content areas, when you've got the two together, it'd be a lot easier if you're working closely together to save time.
And we've never done that. And so this year, we thought that this would really minimize that movement and keep them together for a longer period of time.
And that would just be fourth and fifth?
Right.
Okay.
It was a lofty goal to put third grade out there.
I was gonna say.
The teachers were less fond of it, but the kids really liked it. They felt really big.
That's such a transitional year, I can understand the concerns.
Get some ready for middle school. It'll be interesting to see if what you learned this year as far as what, whether to move the kids upward, you know, rearrange them helps you have less movement in the middle of the year, next year at any point.
Right.
So let us know. We'll be interested to see.
Yeah. It would be. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Jennifer Williams from Coming Elementary.
My Inspire project is Response Intervention, or RTI, and I'm Jennifer Williams, one of the assistant principals at Coming Elementary. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about what RTI is at Coming, what that looks like currently. We do a school-wide RTI, so all of the students from seven fifty to eight forty are engaged in RTI, and we call it Cougar Connections. All of our staff members are involved. That includes everyone, from the speech language pathologist to the classroom teachers, to the PE teacher, to the counselors. Everyone works together, really to meet the academic needs, the social emotional needs, and language needs of our students. In the past, we've previously, we pulled out students who are working at tiers two and three. They received research-based interventions during that time, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we've changed that this year. So why focus on RTI? Well, at the beginning of this year, we looked at our data from the previous year, and we saw that we ended the year with a hundred and forty-one students at tier two and a hundred and eight students at tier three. So that put almost two hundred and fifty students in tiers two and three. That's a lot of students who are not in tier, in tier one. So we had a new principal, this is Leanne Rice, and she brought an article to our leadership retreat to kind of challenge our team, and it was called Pyramid or Ice Cream Cone. So you see the pyramid of intervention, the most students should be at tier one, right? And then we go up to tier two and tier three, the numbers should get smaller. So you can see from our data that we had a lot of students in tier three. In fact, our pyramid, you could say, maybe looked a little bit like an inverted triangle or an ice cream cone. So what, what does that mean that we should focus on? There's a quote in the article that really resonated with me. Said, "In a nutshell, if good teaching and learning are available in the classroom on a daily basis, most students should be able to make grade levels expectations without support." So that led us to focus on tier one instruction. Specifically, what is that tier one instruction gonna look like in that Cougar Connections or RTI block? The large block that students have every day. So how are we gonna maximize that tier one instruction during that time? So how did RTI change for us this year? So it changed in several ways. So we had students who are in tier three, they still were receiving those research-based interventions from support teachers. But it did change in that we didn't offer so many. We really focused and narrowed down the interventions that we were using. And tier two students, I said, you know, before that those students also left the grade level to receive interventions. So now they were staying on the grade level, getting some extra support from those content experts, the teachers. So those tier three groups or those intervention groups weren't as big this year. And then tier one students stayed on the grade level, and they worked in differentiated groups that either supported their learning or extended their learning on grade level standards. So what was our process? It was a process this year. We like to look at this time in rounds. So for round one, which was probably the very beginning of September through about November, we had grade levels pick power standards. We defined a power standard as a really all-encompassing standard, not too narrow, but a really broad standard, that if those students really master that standard, they're gonna be very successful foundational, foundational skill. So you can see that all of our standards here, I pulled a few as examples, are focused on language arts because that was a focus for our school. So that's where grade level started, with language art standards. So grade levels selected their power standards, and then they had to choose an assessment, use some assessment data, how did students perform? And based on how they performed, they sorted those students into groups. So first grade, they were working on sight words. That's a big deal when you're learning to read in your first grade. So they used their sight word assessment. Second grade, they were working on fluency. So they used some FastBridge fluency assessment that we got from universal screening. And then fifth grade, they were working on inferencing from text, and they used some Foulton-Simpanell leveling data to group their students. So that was round one. For round two, we added another facet to that. So grade levels still picked power standards, they still use data to sort their groups, but then we added another layer, another expectation for them. They need to post-assess their students, post-test them to see, are they making growth based on what they did? So I included some data from kindergarten. We have two different groups here. One group is working on letter names. So you see each of those bars represent a student, and the red is their growth. So they were learning and making progress based on their groups. Then we had another group that was working on CVC blends. So they were reading simple words like pop or dab, those CVC words. And you can see they also make growth in their groups. So round three started around January, and we had a grade level that came to me, it was second grade, and they said, you know, we're really having an issue with our math. We don't feel like we have enough time, the students, they're, they're missing some of the foundational skills. So they approached me and one of our instructional coaches, and we said, well, have you considered using RTI time? And so when we said that, they really took it and they ran with it. So I want one of the second grade, the team leader, to tell you a little bit about that.
We realized that there was a giant hole in our students' math basic skills and that we were trying to move ahead with the standards, but yet they were still struggling with their basic things, counting, number sense, place value, simple addition. And so we used our RTI time to utilize that time that we could go in and hit those specific needs with our four students. So we created a pre-test, and we did one of them, the first one was the ICANN counting inventory, and we did that. We had place value questions, and it went up in six different levels of basic math skills. And then we used that to divide up our groups. And we had one group that started out working basically on counting, counting backwards, understanding numbers. We had the next group that was working on basic place value, and one more and one less, ten more and ten less. And we had that all the way up to our top group that was actually working on multi-digit addition and using it in word problems. So we hit everybody's needs and really helped just build that foundation for them. It's been very successful. We still have kids that haven't moved all the way through the different levels, so we still have some that, that need a lot more time with their basic math skills. But overall, it has, it has really shown in their understanding, and especially since we've been working on addition and subtraction strategies, since they understand all those, those basic skills better, they're doing a better job with applying the strategies.
So I just really love that example because that team really felt empowered. They decided that they were gonna tier that assessment, and they decided the levels for the students, and they put them in groups, and really that's what this process is all about. So we have a ways to go, but I love that second grade really took that challenge on and met it this year. So what worked for us this year in this process? Well, we saw benefits at all three of the tiers. So we talked about how in tier three, we had fewer students that were pulled out for those research-based interventions, which led to increased time, the groups were smaller to be more impactful. We saw an increased ownership of the teachers because they were serving those tier two students on the grade level using some strategies, and then they could transfer those same strategies in the classroom when they were working with the students. We liked the flexibility to address the grade level standards. And then there was a focus on that differentiated instruction at tier one to meet the needs of all students, whether we're supporting or extending learning for them. So what did we learn? Change is a process. You saw that we kind of took it in rounds and we added and changed as we went. So it definitely is still a process for us, and we're gonna continue to work on it. We found that teachers did need additional tier two strategies. If those students were still gonna be working on the grade level and teachers were gonna be providing those, they needed to have some resources and some ideas of how to best meet their math and their reading needs. And then we also found that we really need some goal setting and accountability for those tier three interventions. So we need to see that students are making progress because those students are behind. We need to close those gaps quickly. So what's next for us? We're gonna continue to work on what are the best power standards to focus on during that time for tier one instruction. And that's gonna need to include some vertical planning. So as a fourth grade teacher, I can say, hey, when we get those fourth graders from third grade, this is an area where they really need some work. And so those teams can kind of plan together to really focus in on what standards will be most important. We wanna make sure we review the student progress at all tiers. So whether that's looking at our pre- and post-test data for tier one students or the progress monitoring data for tiers two and three students, we need to make sure we're making a difference. That includes vetting those tier three interventions I was talking about. If they're not working, we need to use something different because those students need to make some, some good progress. And then we're gonna continue to work on using, using those differentiated instructional strategies for those tier one students so that all their needs are met, you know, regardless of their level. So it's been a great process. We look forward to continue the work because we believe that it's gonna make the most impact on our students.
Have you seen a change in the test scores in relation to this yet?
Well, we've looked some at our, not the test scores per se, because, you know, those are still coming back, but really our goal is that we're meeting the needs of those students so that we're gonna see a decreased number in tier two and tier three students. Right now, our tier three number looks very similar this year, but we have seen a decrease in our tier, number of tier two students. So we hope with continued work, we'll see those numbers continue to go down.
Did the students in the tiers two primarily or in or the three notice a difference? Did they notice more attention or smaller groups or?
Well, they definitely had more time and, and were smaller groups. We saw that our intervention groups were able to get through material more quickly because there were fewer students being pulled out. So that did make a difference for them.
Exciting. All right. Good project.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have fiscal eighteen budget presentation with Mr. Rick Gunn.
Good afternoon.
I have our books.
I don't wanna hear this. It's pretty exciting stuff. Okay, tonight, I'm gonna present to you the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen initial budget. I prepared a PowerPoint. You also have your board books. It has everything broken down by functional area. Everything that's in the PowerPoint is in this book. Everything that's in this budget is in here in much greater detail so you can peruse and ask questions on. I have changed the flow of this somewhat from how it was last year, trying to make it a little bit more user-friendly. Some highlights for two thousand and eighteen, as you all know, we're one of the fastest-growing districts in the country as well as in the state. For fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, we're looking at the projection of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five students. That's an increase of seventeen hundred and twenty-one or a three-point-two percent increase. That's an increase of seventeen hundred and twenty-one or a three point two percent increase. Since fiscal year 2009, our QBE FTE count has run by fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-two students or a forty-nine point seven percent increase. For 2018, the budget of the governor includes a two percent cost of living adjustment for teachers. This budget includes the two percent cost of living for all employees and also a step. Cost of employee benefits continues to rise. The health insurance for non-certified staff increased another hundred dollars a month to nine forty-five. And certified health insurance has already been at that level. Teacher retirement rates for the employer also increased. For 2018, it's going up seventeen point eight percent. And I'll get into further detail with that as we get into the budget. The tax digest that we have has continued to grow. It's a very preliminary. It's the second version that I've received and it's showing growth at eight point three percent. State revenues will only grow at about six percent. The QBE funding from the state still has an austerity cut of just over four million dollars in it. And before we started budgeting, we were under the impression that that was going to disappear. And it hasn't. So it's still in there. We also maintained our five-star financial efficiency rating for the second year of the second year that it was being given. So we were pleased to provide a budget that funds these increases that I've just, that I've noted and adds slightly to the fund balance as well. Okay, first slide is the general fund overview, basically comparing 2017 to 2018. You can see total revenues are four hundred and five point seven million. Expenditures are four hundred and four point nine million, leaving an excess revenue over expenditures of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, which basically would roll to fund balance. If you look at fiscal year seventeen, we're looking at three point eight million going into fund balance. Down at the bottom of the page, I have a fund balance analysis. You can see our beginning of this year was fifty-three point nine million. That's per audit. We'll be adding to three point eight million from 2017. And then at the end of 2018, projected adding eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, leaving a fifty-eight point six million dollar fund balance at the end of eighteen, which would be fourteen point four seven percent of the 2018 expenditures.
What is the goal for the fund balance?
Well, the state says they don't want you to have more than fifteen percent. Basically, it's your rainy day fund, so to speak.
Right.
However, for myself, it's the money that I have in the bank, the day that I get my first tax payment, tax collection payment is actually what I deem to be my fund balance. But this is basically the funds that we have on hand that we got to operate on from July through October till the tax dollars start coming in. So basically you'll see each month dropping ten to twelve million dollars a month in the fund balance amount till we get to October, when we first start collecting.
Well, three, almost three years ago now, when we went to meet with the rating agencies, we set a target at that time to try to get as near to fifteen percent as possible by this time. So we're very close and we're hopeful that that will make the difference in us getting that highest possible rating. And that rating should be out soon.
Having a conversation with them next week, several other members. James McCoy will be there as well to discuss the county, how it's grown, where it's going, and the school system, where we're at now. Plus showing them that, that, you know, our fund balance has come in line with what we were hoping that we would get to. Over the lean years, when other systems were raising millage rates, back when the economy went south, we didn't raise millage rates. We actually kept them the same and just started utilizing fund balance as well as tightening the belt. And so that's where we are today. We've, we've built it back up to what the state says is the fifteen percent of your fund, of your next year's expenditures.
I think it's good to note too, that when you're looking at revenues, that we don't show any federal revenues.
Oh, no.
Because it's such a small, small amount.
Christian brought up, pointed me today. She asked about the revenues while they're so small. All of the federal revenues, except for a couple of small ones, are actually kept in a special revenues fund. So none of that's reflected in the general fund. General fund gets no federal money. It's just a little tiny dash, and I'll explain that when we get over to that. But, you know, at the end of the day, all of your federal money are in six B Title I in your school food services program.
It's mostly grants.
Grants is what it is. Yes. Any questions on the first slide?
Yep.
Okay. Next. Expenditures by function. This shows you basically what it says, expenditures by function. Instruction being seventy-three percent of our overall budget. The salary benefits for 2018 totaled almost three hundred and sixty million dollars. Operating expenses were almost forty-five million for a total of almost four hundred and five million dollars for next year. As compared to the fiscal year seventeen budget, an increase of eight point four two percent, which has been in line with our, our last two previous budgets have been around eight percent.
And our level instruction being at seventy-three percent is above the level that is.
Yeah, the national, national standard sixty-five, and that's such an important, I know I've said it before, but it's worth repeating. I mean statistically, that's very, very significant to be almost eight percentage points above that national standard. And it, and it shows, you know, what the emphasis is in our community, our school system, is we invest most of our resources as well we should in the classroom.
I also think it's, it's good to note too that central support is getting to be a, a more, much more needed than it was in the past because of the growth of our school system and it still is a small percentage.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the, of the total budget. But that's going to have to increase over the years as we grow.
One of the items that the state gives out when they do their cost per FTE, they have it broken down into different silos. Basically, general administration is where a lot of this, what you said, is collected at. And when you compare us to other systems, it's, it's crazy when you see some of the disparities in the numbers. All of our money is in instruction, whereas where it should be. And everybody else, as you can see, is in central office and all these other places and we're not there.
No, we're not.
At the bottom, you can see a comparison salaries to operations. It's changed very little over the last couple of years and that's pretty much where it's been at for a decade.
Yes.
Because we're, we're labor intensive for people, so. Next is an expenditure comparison. It actually gives a good picture of where we're at. I believe my office is point two six percent over two eleven.
Just pointing that out.
So we're, you know, a quarter of a point, so. But overall, seventy-three percent go into instruction. Salaries compared to operations, again, you can see how we are labor intensive. Changes to salary and benefits budget. This is by functional areas, so you can see the changes there. Overall, eight percent change in the overall budget for salaries and benefits.
Really surprised it's not more.
And I have a breakdown, but we'll, we'll take that twenty-eight million and break it down even further into the various components of it. But yes, with the growth that we have, you know, the salary increases coming from the state, step increases that we do.
Insurance increases, retirement, all of that.
Right. A lot of stuff that we do on our own here go into that.
And I like that we have almost twelve percent increase in the proven instruction.
Yes, and a lot of that is for beyond propel. Well, basically this, the biggest part here is there's two more staff going into improvement of instruction. And I'll talk about that in a moment. As well as, of course, teacher retirement for these areas have gone up. There's some stipends there for some teacher training, dealing with beyond propel, dealing with personal learning and dual language. And we have some trainers coming in for that, you know, I'll talk, talk to that when I get to that section. But overall, salaries and benefits, eight percent increase, which is what it's been the last several years. Changes to operational budgets. You can see we're up five point six, seven percent overall. The instruction drop, we had a piece of software that we no longer have in instruction. So that dropped off. And I believe our only other major change is in maintenance and operation and that's for the mobiles that we have at the schools. We had increased the budget about one point nine million for those.
It's all that of our budget, nothing from the state, correct?
Nothing from the state.
Nothing from the state.
Nothing from the state at all for those. Salary and benefit increases. School-based positions, we're adding a hundred and thirty-nine point five. That makes up of a hundred and two teachers, twenty-three parapros, three principals, two assistant principals, seven and a half counselors, and two instructional tech specialists. Some of that is from growth. On the counselors, we had several that were half-funded, that were split between two schools. We made those whole, so they're not going between separate schools.
That's awesome. Much needed.
Other growth positions, we consider these non-instructional, a social worker, a psychologist, personalized learning coach in teaching and learning, a social secure, social studies teacher on assignment, information services specialist for technology. The bus shop has two mechanics and we haven't added drivers in a while, so we're adding twenty drivers for next year. So we're looking at a hundred and sixty-six and a half positions at twelve point six million. Step increase along with the two percent cost of living is ten point six million. The TIS increase of seventeen point eight is costing five and a half million alone. And we'll get about half of that back from the QBE formula. But again, seventeen point eight percent. And over the last, since 2010, I believe, it's gone up sixty-four percent, the cost of teacher retirement.
Which is really something we need to look at. I mean, we're not, it's not something we can control, but to understand where they're coming from would help alleviate the, the huge increase in one year. That's, that's unbelievable.
I believe. For the employer's share, there is no limit to what they can make it. For the employees' cost, it's limited to six percent, which is where it's at now. So they can't raise that limit. But as far as we go, they can make it whatever they want it to be. Next, state help for non-certified staff. That's gone up another hundred dollars a month, so that's eight hundred and forty-two thousand for next year. On the non-certified, the rate, five or six years ago was a hundred and sixty-two dollars a month. It's now nine hundred and forty-five, which is what certified teacher rate is. So that's a five hundred and eighty percent increase in the last five or six years. So the total changes for salary and benefits overall is roughly around twenty-nine point five million. Salary adjustment history. This is going back from fiscal year 2008 through now. I'm not going to read those off, but you can see the percentage changes with the step increase that we had. We had the five years of follow-up days, which we don't have anymore.
You don't have to read them off, but I'm really proud of the fact that over the last three years, we have been able to go up seven percent for cost of living and include steps in each of those last three years. So while, while we were certainly stagnant for a period of time, we certainly have made some movement in the right direction, which allows us to be competitive in our, in our region, which is critically important, so.
And since the governor did the two percent cost of living for teachers, but we opted to do it.
For everybody.
For all of us. But that's not, we felt that was important, but that's on us.
Right. There's some other systems that have done two percent for the teachers and one percent for everybody else.
And it's not just one year because you have to maintain it from that point on.
Yes. Yes.
But they're worth it.
Next, we have a comparison of the 2016 expenditures per FTE. For the twelve largest systems, you've seen this slide before. We're the seventh largest FTE is seventy-eight hundred and sixty-six dollars cost per FTE and the millage rate is seventeen point three. We still have the lowest cost per FTE. Millage rate, Chatham County, is just slightly below us. And that's for school systems that have thirty thousand or more students. Oh, any questions on that before I move forward? Okay, any questions on the expenditure side so far?
Yeah.
I'll cross over to the revenue side. General fund revenues for eighteen, we're looking at local revenues of a hundred and ninety-seven million, state revenues of two hundred and nine million for a total of four hundred and, almost four hundred and six million. If you look at down below, there's a tax revenue projection for 2018. This is based off of the digest that we actually have. And there you'll see some numbers that say 2017. The 2017 digest is actually what is used to develop the 2018 budget.
Okay.
Always a year behind. So the 2017 exemptions, you see there are one point eight million. Those are the numbers that the tax assessor's office has given me as of about a week ago. Hopefully those numbers won't change. That's going to dictate what the revenue, if it goes up or down, basically that number for the exemptions if that changes. We don't have any numbers on reassessments yet, so we don't know if we would have to have the millage rate rollback hearings or not. As she said, may and may, we should have an estimate of those so we can see where we're at with that. But I have no idea what it could, what the number could be.
Okay.
Millage rate again, seventeen point three. Gross revenue that it generates is a hundred and eighty-one million, there's two and a half percent commission, four and a half million in the net revenue from ad valorem taxes is almost a hundred and seventy-seven million. And you can see it's an eight point three percent increase over seventeen. Just below that, the 2018 QBE, we have their estimated formula. As of the most recent version, it's two hundred point three million. Midterm, we're estimating six point eight. So the net QBE would be two hundred and seven million for a six percent increase. And as we've discussed before, our local fair share, what it's doing to us, this year it was up six million from what it was in the prior years, fifty-four million.
So that's, that's two numbers that go right off the top. The commission of two point five, that's four and a half million. Once we get our net number, that goes right off, right off to the county.
When they make a payment to us, they do take off the two and a half percent of each payment as it comes in.
And then our local fair share goes down to the state right away.
It's just taking off the top. You've earned this much and you're going to get this much. So as you look through the various local revenues, you can see ad valorem, title ad valorem tax has gone up simply because vehicles that were being paid for, the old birthday tax is dwindling those vehicles. I think it was twenty-one thousand vehicles came off the ad valorem list that were being paid for as the birthday tax. Now it's when you buy a car, you pay the title ad valorem upfront and never have to pay another car tag. That's where the monies are switching to. So that's why you see an increase there. Intangible taxes have been on the uptick. So we increased that number to six point three as well as real estate transfer taxes. Interest is actually starting to rise slightly. Not a lot, but it's moving. Always a positive sign. And surplus sales, technology, the technology department has some old computers that are going to be coming up for surplus in 2017. And those computers will be sold and then the funds will offset the new leases that we'll have in 2018.
That's cool.
Did I say seventeen? I meant to say eighteen, sorry. Understating federal revenues, you can see the net QBE. Other state sources is basically a couple of state grants that we get, state preschool and a couple of other smaller ones. Federal indirect cost, that's basically some overhead money that we get from Title I. And federal control, federal flood control funds of three hundred thousand dollars. And that's just for wetlands that we get every year. And that's, it's been usually around three hundred thousand a year. So in the general fund, those two items are basically what I consider federal revenue. They're just a blip. So, so that's in a nutshell where our revenues are. Any questions on those? And again, on the digest, I didn't give you a copy of it. I can get, I'll email you all a copy of it. But again, it's subject to change. Next, we have a new comparison, state and federal to local. Fifty-one percent, fifty-one point four percent for state, forty-eight point six for local. Comparison of QBE earnings. What this is, it's a five-year comparison of the earnings and it's based on the state QBE numbers, not what the actual bodies are. It's what's on the state QBE allotment sheets that they use. So you'll see for eighteen, they're using forty-six thousand, which is what they considered a final count for seventeen. So until we do the counts for eighteen, they don't update any of that. So that's where the midterm comes from. But you can see, as you look down, what those numbers are. The five mil share has gone from forty-nine million to fifty-four point nine million. And looking down, the austerity reduction is still there, four million. And if you look down in the highlighted in yellow, one hundred and sixty-four million since two thousand and three is what we've lost for the austerity.
What we could go with that.
What could we do with a hundred and sixty-three million, sixty-four million?
Also, the local five mil share is calculated prior to the senior exemptions.
The way they do that, the state has state granted exemptions, like for instance, the two thousand dollar homestead exemption and a few other exemptions are backed out. Now, the one we have for the total exemption for the seniors, that's not backed out of their formula. So when they calculate the local fair share, they're using numbers as if we got that revenue, which we didn't.
We don't.
So we're basically getting, you know, you're losing the revenue on the front end from the taxes because of the exemption and then you're losing the local fair share. They're taking more local fair, showing what local fair share from you based as if you got that money, what you did.
Which is in the neighborhood of twenty-four million dollars.
It's by twenty-four million in seventeen. Yeah. So basically you're losing.
Tax on money we don't get.
Right. Any questions on the QBE comparison? For the last five years, it's shown eighteen and a half percent growth and over ten years, forty-nine point seven. And that's just QBE allotment. That's not live bodies to bodies. That's just comparing their numbers, what they have.
I don't ever see that going away though, really.
No, no. I wish the local fair share would go away. The austerity reduction would go away. That'd be great.
That would be nice. It's getting closer. It's getting closer.
This is just a graphic depiction of the QBE revenues. We're going to basically take in 259 million and pay out 54.9 million for the local fair share and another 4 million for the austerity cut. Another thing that we have to do, we have to advertise a five-year history. This is basically a history of the digest for the last five years and the current year. If you look down at the bottom of the page, you can see the percent changes for each year. Back in 2012, we were actually, it actually shrank. And then you can see slowly the growth. In '18, we had a big spike, excuse me, in '15, we had a big spike of 18.88. And for '17, looking at 8.3. When I was doing the initial planning for this, I used 6%, which is what it was last year. So it actually came in a little more than what I had planned on, which is a good thing. The millage rate history since 2000, I just thought this would be a great slide to add to the presentation. We've been at 17.3 for the last four years, and you can see both the M and O and the bond millage, where it's been at. The last slide is school food services. As we've talked about the cost of health insurance and the 2% increase in the step, school food services is suffering simply because of the cost of insurance. It keeps going up and up, as I said, a 580% increase. So she's done everything she can to tighten the belt, to bring in more revenue. But at the end of the day, it's just so expensive for any employee. Some of the staff, you know, they actually earn less than what the health insurance cost is, but you have to have the staff. So you can see her numbers reflected here. Her budget for '17, she was looking at a $940,000 loss. Right now, she's estimating that to be about 465,000. So for 2018, she's budgeting at a $2.8 million loss. So you can see what her fund balance is doing, just like I explained for the general fund.
Where's the 2.8? I see 1.3.
See 1.2.
Almost, 1.3.
1.3, oh, I'm sorry. Did I say 2.8? I apologize. It's 1.3. Excuse me, 1.3. So you see where her fund balance at the beginning of this year is, 5,83,000, and what she's estimating of taking out and then what the '18 would be. Now, she does have a mandate from the state that she can't go below a certain number. So we know sometime during the year, we're going to have to start helping her out with the cost of health insurance. I don't have that budgeted, so it would be a transfer to her as it's needed. It wouldn't be just sending her a lump sum today. It's going to be as we progress through the year and we see where we are before we start sending any funds over to her for that.
It's been a challenge for the last couple of years. Earlier, they always made it and zeroed out. So for the last, I assume, last few years therefore, she wasn't able to put into fund balance and now it's just going down.
It's just going down progressively. Years ago, I can't remember, probably 10 years or so, we used to actually fund all of the benefits for school food. And then when Susan Woods got here, basically, she was able to get the program where it was basically self-sufficient. And then over the years, because of the cost of health insurance, that's slowly been eating away at her fund balance every year.
And I don't think you can dismiss the federal mandates either. I mean, the federal mandates have really crippled school nutrition throughout the nation. Some of that has been relaxed, as you probably know, and we will see if that will have an impact on participation. It might, but you combine the mandates and insurance, and it's been next impossible to end the year in the black, it really has.
And we don't get any federal money either.
Well, can you mention the federal money? I was just going to talk about that. Can you mention the federal at the top then, compared to what we saw earlier?
You know, not even half of her budget is federally funded. Most of it comes from lunch sales. You can see the small amount that actually comes from the state of 465 million. And I believe about a million of that federal money is USDA commodities that she takes, that she's able to get. So they have, we show that as a revenue and also as an expense to offset it. But, you know, except for the last couple of years, the cost of health insurance is catching up to school food where she's going to have to start being supplemented during the year. And I've talked with Val and she's okay for now, but we talked about nearing, you know, April, March, April of next year, start looking at where she's at. As I said, I just didn't want to send half a million dollars and not need it right now.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about doing that. We just decided, let's just wait and see where we are in March and April, and we can make that adjustment at that time. And we're certainly healthy enough to be able to do that fund balance wise, so.
You should know the trend, too, then, of the student increase.
That's right.
And Val is not saying, send me the money now. She's saying, let's see where they're at when we get to that point. But she's being honest, these are, you know, these are the true numbers.
And she's done, you know, along with Jennifer Self, a lot of, you know, really smart marketing campaigns, you know, through social media and other things, getting kids involved and what types of things they like, and, you know, really trying to increase participation as much as she can, so. I mean, we're trying.
Yes, yes. Any questions on anything that I've presented so far? You have your books, excellent reading at night. When you need something to help you go to sleep.
Pretty straightforward, the share.
Next week, we'll have a supplement budget hearing prior to the regular meeting. At the regular meeting, we'd ask her to bring tentative approval to get that from me for the budget. We'll also have the debt service and capital projects and federal programs budgets at that time. On the federal, basically, all we can do, we don't have the allocations yet for all of the grants. So we use the ones that we do know we're going to have, what those dollars are, but we'll use prior year allocations just to have something in there to show what that would be. And of course, debt service is debt service. It's the payments that are scheduled to come out of that, but the revenues from the digest and capital project is, excuse me, capital projects is the ending balances in the projects, what's left to be done in those. So I'll send you those before the end of the week, so you'll have those budgets. But next Thursday would be tentative approval, and then the regular board meeting would be final approval in June. And then if we had to have millage rate hearings, we would have to have three of those hearings before final adoption of the millage rate, which would be in July, excuse me. No questions?
Thank you very much. It's a lot of work.
That's for sure.
You know where to get it.
All right, thank you for all the questions we had. Next up is the 2018 bond timeline with Ms. Jennifer Crotzler.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
As you're aware, our current bond referendum is for projects up to 2018 and Denmark will be our last project. And so it's time that we start planning for projects from 2019 to 2022. That's a lot to say, 2022. So this is the timeline that we're working on. We want to bring to you for feedback. We had our first district committee meeting today, prior to this meeting, and you can see the committee members underneath the timeline and that's representing all of the different departments that are impacted by bond. And we actually had eight people that were not with us in 2014 whenever we did the last bond. So what we covered today are the history of bond and plus referendums. We also covered, Mr. Amerson talked about the difference between the state-funded and the locally-funded, and you know that Mr. Amerson's working on the state funding plan right now as we're working alongside the local facilities plan. We also went over this timeline to get some feedback. We talked to them, too, shared with them the feedback we received from the strategic plan. We had 7,000 people do online surveys and we had 150 in those focus groups. And they talked about and gave a lot of feedback about things we need to improve. So I recommended that the committee members revisit those recommendations prior to building their list. And then we also looked at the enrollment projections. Mr. Amerson went over the enrollment projections for now until 2022. And so what the district committee is going to do is that this summer, they're going to meet and compile their needs list. And then what we're going to do is they're going to get back together in the fall and review those needs lists. And as you know, as they're working on those, this fall, Mr. Amerson is also doing the state facilities plan where he's pulling in the principals, board members and the county commission, county commissioner by district, so he can go and build his state facilities plan. So we're working alongside each other so we don't have any repeats because we know we're going to earn some money from the state facilities plan. And so, once we have the district committee meetings, in November, we're going to compile the list of all of the needs and we're going to start cutting it and narrowing it down. And we're going to have committee meetings with the impacted departments and principals, and I forgot to put board members on there, too. So we'll be meeting and having members with the board members, so you'll be able to review those, too, and give us some feedback. And then in December, we'll bring back a final list to the committee, have them sign off on it, and then we'll bring it to you in December. And that way, you have it, the same time you're looking at the state facilities plan, that gives you plenty of time before we go to the board retreat in January, and we can discuss the list at the board retreat in January. And then the county has given us their timeline that we have to meet for the legal requirements for the referendum. And so the board will have to approve the resolution at your regular meeting in January. You have to, then, we will take that to the Forsyth County Board of Voter Registrations and Elections where they will adopt the resolution for the special election. We only have two dates this year that we can do referendums, May and November. And then we'll publish a legal ad in the Forsyth County News, begin the communication plan to inform our voters, publish the notice of election in the Forsyth County News. The last day to vote is about a month before, and the vote will be May 22. So this is the timeline that we've developed. I wanted to bring it before you so you can give us some feedback. It's because we just had a first meeting and see what we need to do so we can achieve the goals set.
All right, we appreciate that you're adding on the board members to that earlier point, so that especially by districts, so appreciate that. Just one point to clarify, part of the reason we're doing this timing, this will put us at next year, wrapping all this up, depending on how goes the vote, because we'll be doing budget then. We need to know where we're at with this as far as the bond referendum so that we continue to plan. But also, the way, if I understand things correctly, in order to apply for and actually get state funding that we have been basically approved for, we have to kind of get that in before, is it not August for our large expenditures so that, it's a long timeframe because then it has to get on the General Assembly, which is actually April of next year. So we're under the gun time-wise. We can't wait until the fall to do this because we would miss that August and therefore, if we needed to build a new school, we would lose a whole year.
Yes.
Mike, isn't that right?
And I went back and looked at the 2014 bond, which was also May, and when we actually brought the bond financing to you, where we would have the money, and that wasn't until October. So two, we need to do it in May so we can get the money by the fall so we can start doing projects. Because if we wait until November, we won't get that money until 2019 to actually begin projects.
To build a school, so you're talking three years before we have the relief.
So in order to get, in many cases, the state funding, they just say, well, we'll give it to you, but you have to have the matching funds. So that's why we have to do the timing the way it is. Okay.
Good point.
Anything else to do with that timeline? I'm going to have the piece for the meeting with the board members.
It is, it is. And it's not just about, the bond is not going to have, it will have new construction, of course, but a lot of it, we have 37 schools, so often it is a lot of normal maintenance, wear and tear from safety, security to air conditioners to roofs or whatever.
Correct. And the place in transportation, technology.
It'll affect the whole county.
Yeah, fine arts. You saw in the feedback we got for the strategic plan, there was a lot of comments about fine arts needs, athletic needs, so, yeah.
Can you refresh us with a link to that survey input so that we can?
Yeah, you want me to send it to you? You want me to show you now?
Either or, just so that we can take into that as we think about it.
Go to the website and then under strategic plan. You need to click here to review our progress. This is all of the work that the board and cabinet have been working on since last fall. And under information for strategic plan, team meeting number one, you can see the focus group and online survey input. You can see the public engagement survey questions. And then also, when we go down to meeting number two, you'll be able to see the qualitative analysis, too. But I'll send you the links, everything's there.
That's good.
And then I think I even, oh, yeah, I do have all the data from the online survey. So if you want to go through all 7,000 of those, that's on there, too.
All right, that's good to have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next is LED signs with Mr. Tim Amerson.
I've been asked to come back and review some of the questions from the board retreat, some of the outstanding issues and clarifications on our position with the electronic message board or LED signage at our schools. And to clarify a few things, one of the things within the Alliance Academy is we do have a electronic message board sign there. That was one of the ones we didn't have an issue with because that was within the city of limits and was not subject to the sign ordinance established by the academy, which was the crux of most of our conversation at the board retreat. One of the things, and I'm a little chagrined to say this after the fact, was we did learn that we do have the electronic message board sign at the Denmark High School. That was actually brought in in one of the early rounds of programming for the school. Much of that was probably based on discussions that this was, the new technology was coming out and the architects should plan for it. It was not shown in the plans, but it was detailed in the specifications, and then the addenda went out to update that to clarify that it would be the electronic message board. So we do right now in the contract have that for the Denmark High School. I have gone back and reviewed this with the sign planning department, Melanie Halsted, and she's reviewed it with the head planner at the county. And the location of the sign for the Denmark High School being on the four-way divided highway and our residential zoning as a street entrance sign would be permissible as an electronic message board. So we have clarified, we could get approval for that sign as designed and set up. So we would need to look to getting that sign permit through and approved as the new electronic message board.
I mean, how do they, I mean, my understanding of sign ordinance is no administrative approvals. And I mean, it's hardcoded in there that you cannot have an LED in a residential zoning. So I'm glad that there's, I mean, it's in there pretty specifically.
I can clarify that from the table on residential zonings. Get to that page. And that of which monument sign for the street entrance onto a residential subdivision, you can have monument sign, and there's no restrictions to having that as an electronic message board. And it is addressed within the electronic message board in any district where the property, and this is any district, be it agricultural, residential, all up the line, that we have 100 feet of road frontage on a four-lane or greater divided roadway and has principal use that is either religious facility, college, university, private or parochial school or hospital. And we always question why that of the public school wasn't done. And neither is that done for the municipal government building. So a public library or government services building would also be allowed to be, have an electronic message board at a sign in that right of way. So that was one of the points of clarification I got from the planning department.
Okay, I assumed that they had left out the public school because private, parochial, all the others are generally in a commercially zoned area because they're a business where public is, as you know, there is no zoning for school systems. So we plunked our schools in residential.
And so many of the codes of this nature are an aesthetic type code, what the community's looking for, so they do try to keep the private developments and the private individuals a little bit more, originally by that means, but as a public school municipal entity, we're rarely not subject within those codes. But as we work through the county, we do follow their guidelines. So as we discussed, one of the things with previous concept of having an advertising message sign that was a big issue, where they want to scroll that second, that message every eight seconds to be able to get as much advertising time to roll through there, that's not allowed on those signs. It's 20 minutes before you can change, I think that's right, before you can change that message. So we would be following that restriction. The light levels at the evening and nighttime hours are part of the program. So all those type of things, we would set up a program within the controls to operate the sign within those guidelines.
So it's not evasive to the people that live in that community?
That's correct.
I still, I hear what you're saying, but currently, the daytime is 6,500 nits, the nighttime is 350. And many people feel that that county standard is too bright, particularly on a rainy night. So can we come up with a standard for the school system that is less than the current county standard that many perceive is too high?
Yeah, and we can work with and verify with Ms. Halsted, who does the sign planning for the county. And that's one of the things that she is required to come back out and do after the signs. And that's one of the things that she is required to come back out and do after signs established, is to verify those lighting levels. So we could work with them to set those lighting levels. How nits compares to lumens and all those sort of things, I have really such new technology, no understanding of what it is. But we do know that the standard electronic message board that we now have, to kind of build our standard upon, has sixty-four levels of lighting. So I'm sure we can achieve that lighting level below three fifty. How low, you know, is it functional at nighttime? I'm not sure what that equates to a nits.
Could be something too, Kristen, that maybe at some point at night, that they're not run.
Well, that was one of my questions, at night, like, as you know, Brookwood Elementary is a great example of going completely dark. It's in the middle of a subdivision, it goes dark, and we love that.
Yeah, with the traditional signs, basically, they have a fluorescent backlit panel that's inside the cam that illuminates the sign. And those are tied to what we call our total darkness campus. So we have it set at a certain time, when the alarm system's set, and we can turn off all the exterior lights and all, the lighting goes through a lighting contactor. So that signal from the security system that's been armed now activates that sequence for us to turn off the exterior lights on the campus. We could look at such a thing for this. I wouldn't do it through that lighting contactor control, because the electronics involved, I hate to crash that power off and then bring it back on abruptly. But the system, the software, as I reviewed the submitter for the program, allows you to set times to start and stop.
So you could just, you could do it just in a different way?
That's right, we can tell the computer, turn the screen off at nine-thirty at night, turn the screen on at six o'clock in the morning.
That's, that's key. I think that would be a really, I think that's a really.
They have that display operation within there. And you can manually set the lighting levels and all that within it, versus that of just the photo sensor.
Across, like, for Denmark, for example, directly across is an undeveloped, it is residential, but it's zone residence, but it's not.
It has not been developed yet.
But down the street it is, so it's not in a bad place for something like this, so to speak.
Yeah, Denmark, it is kind of down that low area, so we're not up on a hill where you can see across the hillsides and such like that. It is a lower location, and it's within that curve, so the sign's kind of tucked back within the curve, you know, as you come down the street.
I think it's a good thing that we were restricted to the rules of not being able to change it to every twenty minutes. But on the flip side, those who get that exemption is because they're doing something like an amber alert.
Amber.
I can see, I mean, would we not, as a school system, if that need came up, want to do an amber alert?
We can't, because the location of the sign, the size of the sign, there's certain restrictions. I mean, I think this is kind of billboard size, because I want to say it's like ninety-something square feet minimum that you have to have. Your sign has to be at a certain height, so it's really designed a lot more for the billboards or tall standing signs that will reach a lot more public out through there. But as a residential monument sign, we're restricted to be below the forty square feet.
So it wouldn't really be good for that, then, or something?
Yeah, it's just that, the way they look, the amber alert, we just don't reach enough people to broadcast like a billboard along the side of four hundred or Highway Twenty, that can change the signs.
All right, well, that's good. Do you have any more?
No, like I said, I do, there was that one point within the table, and just to clarify that, for those signs that are on lots, zone for residential, which have a non-residential use, and that part for restricting electronic message boards as a point of confusion, these are your single homes that are not in a subdivision. So like a subdivision, you can have the monument at the entrance, but for the single homes that have a conditional use permit to operate its business, it restricts them from being able to put an electronic message board on there. So on James Burgess Road, there's a business near that school. It is probably old residential property. They don't see commercial clients necessarily at that property, but that would restrict them from putting up an electronic advertising panel for that single residential use.
As it is right at entrance of Brookwood, is a cup, residential cup that has a chiropractor, and they can't put a sign up either.
Yeah.
That's why the community has just followed that topic.
That's right, just to clarify the difference between those two.
And just to be clear, and we talked about this January through retreat, we're not talking about, obviously, advertising for sale. What we're talking about is being able to publicize to the community the events going on at the school. Kristen and I talked earlier today, that wouldn't mean that we wouldn't say, for example,
Chick-fil-A night?
Yeah, Chick-fil-A night, or Automation Direct sponsoring robot. We're not saying we wouldn't do that, what we're saying is, we're not selling advertising. We would not be doing that at all, just wanted to be clear. We had that conversation in January, and the board was very clear that we weren't to not do that.
All right, looking forward, and this may be too much, but how would we roll this out? Would we start with high schools and the other schools, or is it going to be part of the bond?
It would just be with these two schools. The Alliance Academy and Denmark High School. And then it would, I think it would depend, it'd be very much a case-by-case basis, where the school is built. As to your point, if it's a school like Brookwood and a community, we probably wouldn't even consider it. It would just, really, school by school. But if other schools wanted to, they would have to submit through the facilities office, have a plan and funding to make, to make that happen. My guess is, probably not going to happen, because we're not going to allow advertising. Would you agree with that?
That'd be, hard for a school to say they want to put forth that money without a fundraising.
Right.
And, you know, as I said, we look at this as kind of what we've got from Daktronics, where their model seems to fit the bill and to use it for standard. But then, like I said, we come to East Forsyth High School, which right now is an agricultural zone property on a two-lane Jollum Down Road. I don't know that the county would want to see an electronic message board at the new East Forsyth High School, because of that location on Jollum Down Road.
Sorry, we're not trying to difficult, because clearly, I mean, everybody's done the PTA thing, where you had to go out and put the little letters in those signs. And so we realize that being automated is clearly a badge.
Georgia twenty becomes six-lane, someday Sonny's going to want to sign that people can read from across six lanes.
That's a good point. All right, well, that was a lot of work, thank you.
So with that, you know, we don't need a vote, but I just wanted to make sure, I mean, because it's not too late to change and go back to the traditional signs, but I just wanted to make sure the board was okay with moving forward with these, under these stipulations with Alliance and Denmark. So, I mean, do you have your consent on that? Okay, we're good.
Thank you. More exciting stuff, construction update with Mr. Tom Winning.
This is more fun stuff. Unfortunately, we experienced a solid month of progress during the past thirty days, starting with our high schools. Several of our high schools that have been occupied were successfully working through the closeout process at West High School. And now that we have moved into the new performing arts center areas, those areas that were vacated of band and choir are now being repurposed. And construction is well underway. And I just highlight that, because over the summer, we really do have a short time period to get those areas done this July. But fortunately, we are progressing well with that construction. So moving on to Denmark, you see the highlight milestone of the structure now being complete. That's really important, because that opens up literally every square foot of the project now to all the diverse trades from A to Z. So we're now in excess of two-hundred-and-seventy-five workmen and women on a daily basis on the job, really working on each element, depending on where we are. So if you look at the aerial as an M, in the lower right-hand corner, the sequence will be right to left. Starting with that first exterior face, we do have now window frames being installed, glazing being installed in the next couple of days. I just highlight that, because that moves then to the next major milestone of dry-in. When we look at the entire project, we'll be dried in, which is always the critical concern, to beat winter weather in October. So we've got three, four months ahead of us to get the exterior complete for dry-in. Commensurate with that activity, we've got Sonny Power working the permanent site utilities to the site, such that when we are dried in, we'll be able to turn on the HVAC units and systems. So we'll have climate control in a watertight environment, which then allows all of the interior finishes to occur over the winter, regardless of what happens. So if you add all that up, we're well on our way towards completing in April. So there's a shot of the other left-hand side looking primarily at the gymnasium. And then you've got to fear for the magnitude of the add alternate of the additional classrooms that we took, which is on the right-hand side of the photo with the steel structure. So as you see, that's just finished there, but yet where we started, we're working on finishes. So you really run the full gambit of activities in the building. So I'm looking as an overview from the site, just working our way from right to left of the project. Fortunately, the county's work at Marinex is now complete. So that ties in well to our three different accesses of bus, from one side, teachers from another, and students from a third. And the paving of all of those areas that you see, just a few, well, a week ago, this was April twenty-ninth. So the gray areas are the subsurface binder, just before permanent paving takes place. And that will take place this week. The other significant, I'll say, activity milestone that occurred over the past month, we successfully procured the synthetic turf fields. You might recall, both we wanted to upgrade the quality of those fields, which we've done, working through the intergovernmental agreement. You know, we're pleased that not only are we within the budget, but we are also enhancing the quality. And then thirdly, from a schedule perspective, we're working out a plan now to get those, really all of that athletic fields in there, whether it's the, so that we've got the competition football, we've got the practice artificial turf, we've got the softball, the baseball, the soccer, and then the tennis courts, to get all that turned over very early in the spring, speaking with the athletic department and Nathan Turner, so that students that are in the process of going to Denmark will be able to use those facilities prior to the school opening. So that's the plan we're currently working through. And then again, that really synergistic move with the intergovernmental agreement and getting the county field online early is underway and in progress as well.
So the increased quality, does that speak to longevity, or just day-to-day?
The fields will be cooler. We're using like a Coolmax, we're encapsulating the crumb rubber. So both from a temperature perspective and some of the concerns that, while potentially, on fact, scientifically, there is some concern over crumb rubber, so we encapsulate that, and that helps with other features as well.
And this will probably be the new standard. I mean, as you know, our other five high schools, we're getting close to having to do a replacement, so this is a good time to do this.
This is like about ten years, is the general?
Yeah, the warranty is eight. I'd say, you know, for the competition field, that'll work. I'm somewhat concerned, just out of common sense, the recreation field, the practice field, is literally going to get used all day long, and then all evening long. So just the warranty on those, we'll watch close, and that's probably closer to the eight years of pretty significant warranty on those.
It's exciting, they'll be able to use some of the fields prior to the school actually opening, makes sense. The county's going to be happy.
That's great.
Yeah.
So that's just a couple of different views of Denmark. Moving on to Alliance, we have the top-out ceremony, May twenty-fourth. So essentially, it's one month behind what I just described in Denmark. All of that same sequence I just described also applies to Alliance. We feel very comfortable with Alliance, because remember, it's much smaller than Denmark. But the whole mission of getting done, climate control, and getting dried in before winter weather, we're well on our way at Alliance as well. Similarly, all the site utilities, water, power, moving to the site is well underway and successful. Going to the middle schools, we have recently occupied the additions and renovations at Liberty, North Otwell, Piney Grove, and Vicari. So Punch List is currently underway. And moving to the elementary schools, Mashburn Security Access Square was turned over last month, and Dave's Creek has just begun construction.
So this, this list is a great way to look at the 2014 bond and say that it's new construction, and it's HVAC, and it's just so much more than that. This is, this is the results?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any requests for future agenda items? Next up is, I'm grabbing another page. RFP seventeen dash zero-six, Wide Area Network, with Mr. Brad Richardson.
Good afternoon, it's been a few months since I've been in front of you. Appreciate you working and seeing on the work session, and of course, is atypical. But the way the bidding schedules fell with the E-Rate deadline being this, this week, we needed to ask for your permission today, just for these two contracts. Of course, with that time of season where you'll be seeing a lot more through the consent over the next couple of months. But today, I would like to speak to you about, first of all, the Wide Area Network. This is the contract that used to be, you probably have seen in the past, but was designated as dark fiber. E-Rate changed their bidding guidelines last year to us, to, that would require us to look at different scopes within that, within that field to acquire managed, to look at managed versus the dark fiber, so we had to resolicit that, that contract. So we've done that proposal, as you see here. Comcast is the highest scoring and lowest cost offer, which would be our recommendation this afternoon. It basically would be a continuation of the same services that we've been receiving. But as mentioned, we needed to resolicit, to be compliant with the E-Rate funding rules. So it would be my request to.
We'll take those separately, I'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion, this is for RFP seventeen?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, the next one up, RFP seventeen oh-seven, District Wide CAT six-eight upgrade.
Yes, ma'am, this, this one is a new contract. It is Technology Services is seeking to upgrade the cabling within all of our schools for the purpose of being able to upgrade access, specifically wireless, I believe. In order to do that, we need to be able to run new cabling to every classroom and other access points within the school. So it's a large-scale scope contract here. So we've solicited that, as you see, we received multiple offers. There was a lot of interest because of the size of this, this contract. Tech Optics was the highest scoring and lowest cost offer that we've received, meeting the terms and conditions of the contract.
I couldn't believe how much less they were than some of them, it was incredible.
Yeah, it was typically, you would expect the delta to be a little bit shorter than that.
Have we used some before?
Yes, ma'am, they've done a lot of work for us, which was one of the reasons why we felt a little bit confident in their number, because they're in our schools a lot. If it was a company that had not worked here before, we would probably want to probe even deeper to make sure they understood the scope of the services. But they, they actually probably know the backbone of our infrastructure, as well as our guys, in some cases, maybe even more, so.
What is the timeline on getting this done?
It will be, it will be phased.
Okay.
So the pricing that we received is, as you see here, is lump sum, but we've, we've received it per school. So I believe that the plan is from Technology is to start with the high schools and work their way down. So the schedule, they can do the schedule within a year, which is, which is pretty impressive, actually.
It's a lot of work, yeah.
It's a lot of work, and they have to work when we're not teaching.
Yeah, that's important.
And so a lot of it will have to do with, with the multiple funding sources that will be supporting it, as the funds come in as well. So that, that schedule is very doable within, within a year.
Good.
With that, I'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Tomood.
Motion by Tom, second by Ann, all in favor? Is that unanimous?